Uh, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with uh one change about that fifteen minute parking spot at Howard's uh that'll be removed and the replacement will be actually on the corner instead of where it's becoming the parking spot is.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Wait a second.
Second.
Hey, you want to make a second favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Want you to make a second favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on down to public comment area. Citizens may address counsel on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Out of respect for counsel and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Have any public comments? Okay. Go now.
My name is Marlon Turner and I'm here on behalf of the school. Um, the seniors would like to do a parade before graduation that would start at nine o'clock. Um, they would line up at nine. The parade would start at nine fifteen. They will go um east on South Third Street, cross the highway up to E Street, um go um north on E Street, and then turn west on North Second, cross the highway there, and go down to L Street and end at back where they started. Um, I wouldn't have a form here, the ODOT form, except that it had to be amended and as soon as I get that, I can bring it in.
Well, as long as the you have the ODOT form and everything is okay with the sheriff's department.
The sheriff's department has been notified and.
I really don't have a problem with it.
I suggest somebody make a motion to amend the agenda to add it to your new business just temporarily and then you guys formally approve it. That way you get it done before the graduation happens.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
But your subject ODOT approval.
I'll make a motion to add it to our agenda under new business.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve it and you know got approval.
Okay, motion made in second favor?
Aye.
Okay.
She doesn't make all the like the energy.
You didn't say oh why, you just kind of said it.
Okay.
Sometimes you don't work a little bit well enough alone.
That's right.
Okay, do you have any more public comments? Eight thirty-nine, we'll move on down to Old Newton. So we've got smoke management, community planning, and what uh I wasn't at the last meeting on this, so somebody bring me up a little bit speed on this.
Mr. Mayor, what was being presented is if you remember back in two thousand nineteen, we entered into a partnership with Lake County and multiple local fire agencies to kind of do some information, surveys, stuff like that for a this kind of a sensitive zone in here and then you kind of have to maintain it. And the council's concern why it was picked for this one is what the town was taking on as far as being the record keeping and having to keep updating reports. So it was kept to this meeting and to get some more details on what was being expected. We do have a we do have an agreement out there, but as the town had mentioned, there's some other community partners that have a little more resources than we do. So we want to make sure that we are based up at the line, sure trying to keep this maintained when we're one of the smaller eight entities involved.
The health department's going to take care of most of that.
Correct, and a lot of the data should be getting done by the um by the local fire agencies. You know, the members of the list and the call.
My question would be, why doesn't the health department just take over the whole deal when you deal with it? The town doesn't really have the resources. Manpower wise or financially.
That's my feeling on it too, but because I don't know how this how this how it would play out.
And I don't think that's prohibited by that agreement, so I think.
Go ahead, Barry.
So there's no financial cost to the town. Uh, what what the what needs though is it needs to be represented by the city and the county. And it needs to be submitted, the annual report needs to be submitted by the city uh to the DEQ for annual uh reporting. All the re all the work will be done and completed uh by the Forest Service or the BLM and Public Health.
So we just have to mail them off?
You just have to nail it off with under your under your.
The city.
Putting a signature on it, being a uh you know, a partner in the project.
So basically, the what it will turn into is the data will be collected, they'll get it to us by and I would just make sure there's clear timelines so that we don't get too late on this because obviously you guys want to meet plus money.
Oh, yeah, we want.
And then so it can get formally approved and then sent off. So that would be if you guys were to take that on and I with that explanation, that makes sense.
Yeah, i- if that's all is involved in.
I don't have a problem with it either.
My my biggest concern was like we talked about in the last meeting was the the manpower to be able to do this with having an office of two people.
Well, we'll be uh three of the only counties doing this, correct? You send an organ. So that uh.
Well, so there there's actually six now, but only two of them have been approved. So only Ben and Ashlyn have had their community response plans approved so far. So all of this that we're talking about is only after it gets submitted, reviewed by DEQ and ODF, and then it has to get approved, then we would go forward and then be required to do that annual reporting. But there's still a few more steps to to.
Okay. Who's going to follow up and do those few more steps? Maybe complete.
Uh, Barry and Mr. Turner will sign the document and submit it.
Okay.
ODF and DEQ will review it and tell us if we need to make edits or not. Then you put in for your one hour exemption. Again, that would be the leaders of the Lake County Commissioners and then the town council, mayor, um and then the reporting is then by all of the other partners.
So there's not a ton of time in there we're going to have to put in this.
No, hardly any at all.
Time all for it.
Yeah.
The town, this is not how the manpower does and several hours a month.
Right, no, you basically got a grant to do it all. It's all in this binder, it's done. You've just got to sign it and be a partner. Yep.
So there needs to be a motion that operates and there is science report for some bill.
I'll make a motion for the mayor to sign this report.
Okay, motion made in second favor?
Aye.
Will you oppose? Okay, right, move on down. Uh, Lake County building code and nuisance enforcement specialist. Myself, I have some questions on this. One is how many days a week are we going to get five? Second of all, um, just thirty-eight percent they're asking for.
Thirty-four.
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 Oh, thirty-four percent, okay. Um, but there's nothing mentioned in anything in there about town like you. Where'd you got?
Well, the the other thing is Barry and this is what we talked about in the last couple of meetings, we still don't have the information. We still don't know what the wages are, we still don't know what we're paying thirty-four percent.
Okay, so I I think I could help out with that tonight.
Okay.
Uh, I have a hand up for you so I can present it. And uh, this is the job description. Thank you. We've uh recently been in a discussion with uh the union about entry job costs and et cetera, or you know, entry level position. Uh, it would start out at about the forty thousand dollar a year range uh just for salary. It would not, that does not include insurance, et cetera, et cetera. So when you heard Commissioner Howard talking about um talking about a hundred thousand dollar a year job, you basically have to double that when you bring on insurance and everything else. So forty thousand means eighty thousand. Thirty-four percent of eighty thousand is twenty-seven thousand two hundred. That is that is what the current ask is from the county uh to the city to help support it. Um, so again, um, it's a draft, but we kind of think that's where the starting salary will start at at around forty thousand.
So you're looking at, I mean, all in, at the end of the day, you're looking at about twenty-seven thousand from the county.
Twenty-seven two is thirty-four percent, thirty-five. Um, and and something you need to be aware of, you know, uh, the county goes, they get raises, you know, so it'll be about a five percent increase every year.
Three to five.
Uh, up to the first five years.
Would that be a union position?
Yes.
Yeah, after you.
But even in the union, you still negotiate the contract, so it won't always be five percent every year.
It'll run two to five.
But if you could budget for it.
I mean.
What is generally between three and five?
With your guys' bargaining unit, what is your COLA looking at for the next two or three years or what? I mean, I don't what's your what's the current contract going to be?
Well, the current is three percent plus an automatic one percent, so they're already getting they're gonna get four. And then beyond that, I'm not tuned into the game. I'm thinking too much more about it.
If we figure five, I think it'll be.
You may want to be more like seven, just as uh with some of the other inflation goes up depending on where your guys' contract expires, that I'm seeing with some of the other agencies, our percent COLA is quite a bit higher. So you just want to, you may want to just for budgeting purposes, you may want to put up a top end on it just so that you don't get caught unprepared because usually these contracts are two to three years. Once you've started this, obviously, you guys have always said when you start something, you don't want somebody getting yanked out of position, so you may want to consider maybe a second. And remember, that's on top of that five percent or that three to five is one year's three to five, the next year, that raises in there, that's three to five percent on top of each raise each year, so it's.
Hospital and teachers don't get that.
Mm-mm. You don't get that here at the town either.
Yeah, I think that's that's on the high end. That's a high end. That's a high end.
Yeah, it is. I see a few others, so I'm just warning you. Inflation's going up, so when CPI goes up, those tend to get.
Again, the county is agreeing to uh provide a vehicle, provide a workspace, and you know, it's all going to be taken care of there, so that's no question.
And this is under direct supervision of the planning director?
That's under negotiation as well.
So, if I may.
You see drafts slapped across that.
No, I would I would want this one to win under um.
Service partner.
No.
Dave.
Wow. Dave calls.
No, no.
Lee Furman.
Dave Furman.
No. No. He's. Dave's uh planning, or he's does planning, but he's got plenty of other jobs. Um, he's he's part of all our facilities and whatnot. So this also has a building code. See, it's called a code enforcement officer. Uh, so there'll be building codes, there'll be land codes, uh, and that is the shop that this needs to reside under.
That's what I think, yeah.
So would council be in on the hiring of the person or is it just the choice of the county?
Oh, I'm sure we could uh put together a panel that would involve.
That should be if we're going to do joint, it needs to be a joint factor.
Yeah, I have, we haven't discussed it, but I'm sure we can do that.
You guys probably also.
Just have a committee, you know, there's a couple of us and a couple of those guys.
Well, there's only three of them.
Well, one.
Just aging.
Yeah, well, it probably won't be all three of us either.
No.
Probably be one and then others be somebody in plan.
And uh, maybe a couple members.
Yeah.
And what about schooling because they'll have to go to school for tickets?
Yep.
Fun.
So it's going to be a slow process, um, but uh.
And there will be a few modifications to ordinances necessary on our end too.
Yeah, I want the ordinances to be kind of seamless across the board.
They can't be. They they can't be on some aspects, but they can't be on others because we have certain code stuff that does not apply to what they do just because of how close we have.
The city of the county.
Correct, but but again, maybe a similar fine schedule, for example, that kind of stuff, absolutely. But the other main thing is just updating our ordinance because right now, our ordinance is read either town manager, planning director, or um chief of police. Obviously, we don't have chief police anymore, so that's just the one here.
Well, we're the now where Shannon's at is we have to match, you know, if if the county has a certain code or a certain code number, we should have the same code number to cover the same issue.
Right.
You know, as far as who's going to be responsible, that's that's easy to change.
Yeah, I'm just I don't want any gray areas on enforcement on stuff.
The last thing we need is somebody to go do a enforcement on properties between that and be it a different code than what the county has, but it's the same issue, and then have it written differently to get better. You've got the county code stuck in the head, not the town code stuck in your head. So we need, we'll have to meet with the commissioners and come together on what our code, you know, the ordinances are, how they're written, how they're laid out, so we're dealing with the same codes, the same.
Yeah, I think that's great.
You know, we can put a committee together, whatever we need to do. I think we, if we go forward with this, we definitely need to come together and talk about our our codes and what we're enforcing and how we're going to do this, so we're not confusing the person that we put in this position.
It's going to be a big education level there for everybody, including the person that gets selected to do this position, so.
The the thing, the other information that I need, Barry, is um on this thirty-four percent, I think like you know how many hours it's going to be dedicated to the town and what's going to be dedicated to the county and how that's going to look.
Yeah, you know, uh, there's lots of places uh in the county that uh would be a great place to start, um, but uh, you know, I think as long as we're doing some within the town and some outside of the town, um, that's the best way to start. I think that's one thing that we need to monitor throughout the the process of the job is to make sure that we're uh the town's giving their fair shake of the code enforcement.
Yeah, and maybe revisit it in a couple of years and maybe rebalance if we.
Or yearly.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can sit down annually and have a have a meeting and look at it, see how we're doing.
Yeah.
And some kind of quarterly reports on like a time sheet or something like that of how much time spent on it. And you guys probably should have an MIU that specifies like two days a week, you know, sixty hours, something along those lines.
Well, get a monthly feature.
Right. Either way would work.
You know, monthly where what officers are in town, how much time, everything else.
Yeah, that'll work as well.
Probably.
Well, my dear.
Yeah, you had a question, so uh, sorry, I wasn't here the last time this was discussed. Will this person have the legal authority to issue a citation?
Yes.
So is that a a law enforcement function and does the person need to be uh, you know, authorized with powers?
It's not a law enforcement function. It's uh just getting qualified and and.
I believe it's a six-week program, right, Barry?
Yeah, they're going to have to go to some training.
Right.
To become uh make sure we're filling it out correctly so that we don't have to issue it more than once.
Yeah.
You know, there's there's a lot of stuff in there. It goes into the court system, so it kind of takes everybody out.
Yeah, I just don't want a person to have, you know, the the job duty, but then not have the authorization and, you know, issue a citation to someone who doesn't want to conform to the code and then lose in court because of a technicality or some kind. You know, that would be awful and then the person, we likely to lose that person and.
Yeah, they get frustrated.
That's part of the education.
Yeah, okay.
The way I understood it was they would be, they'd go through class, they would be authorized to write citations.
Right.
Then the court will uphold that citation.
Got it, thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
And since we don't have a municipal court, that would be circuit court here.
Circuit court has agreed to take this on.
Right, and they they've always done that for the town as well, so it's kind of the.
Okay. So Barry, I know you guys are coming up on budget, working for you to start our budget process. Um, I think us as a council at this point need to come up with a few questions and maybe one or two of us can be put one or two of yous who have a call and we can talk about this and we should.
Okay.
You guys all agree to that?
Okay.
We're getting closer.
Okay.
Getting close.
Anything else?
No. Are you are you tabling this to the next meeting?
Let's table it.
Yeah. Could you please make a motion?
I make a motion to get listening to.
I'll second that.
And Barry, if we now in the next meeting, then either myself or Shannon or Jay will get with you, you know, have a few questions and a few things worked out, and then we'll uh see if we can move forward with it.
Good.
As soon as we're done, we can call and.
Wish you're over, since it's kind of in the lead, um, he's got something going, see if so, but any of us could be.
Yeah, we could meet with you and Mark both.
Yeah.
If if uh that would be better since we've been the only one really in the council of it. So if we were, if we can't, we, you know, one or two of us can meet with you and uh Mr. Allison, sit down, chat with him, and get some details worked out.
Sounds great. Thanks.
Thanks, Barry. Uh, move on down. Oh, yeah. Motion's made in second.
Yeah.
Uh, frozen paper?
Aye.
Okay. Um, move on down to SB eight sixty-four, the new local marijuana tax increase bill going to the senate. It's been voted on already.
It has not been, I just checked uh.
Okay.
Right before the meeting and it is still in committee. The idea behind this bill is, as you guys know, we used to get a fairly decent share of revenue sharing from state level marijuana taxes, and after they passed about measure one-ten, they diverted quite a bit of that money from both schools and local municipalities. So we were originally capped at a three percent local option tax, sales tax on marijuana, and the idea behind this bill is to raise that to a potential maximum of ten percent to replace some of that lost revenue. So that's the.
Part of that is also being shared with the county.
So actually, seven percent of the increase.
Correct.
Now, we get three percent.
Well, we we get three percent and then wherever the increase, the county will get seven percent of the increase.
It's all good, it's all increased.
Yeah.
Okay. Ginger, discussion on the Brownsfield.
Yes, uh, I have put together a presentation that's more than just the Brownsfield. It's probably going to take me ten minutes or more. If you wanted to put me towards the end of your uh new business, I would be willing to do that, so these folks can do their thing, or I can go now, whatever your pleasure is.
Um.
Get it over with.
Thanks, Jay.
At the next meeting?
Pardon?
Can that be presented at the next meeting?
It could be if you wanted me to.
Can we do that?
Do you have a work session coming up?
Um, oh, you've got budget going on. We've got budget going on.
Yeah.
And uh.
I can do it, it's not a big deal, it's.
Put it off the end of this one, so everybody else can.
Yeah, let's just do it today. Let's do it today. Ginger's here, so.
We have an executive session also.
That's fine. We can.
Okay.
Okay. Move on to the new business. Uh, we have a letter and I'm I thought about this when we put it in on the on the south volume four about putting the four-way stop on South Fifth and South H, and I, from what I'm hearing, the traffic has been terrible, so I would like to go ahead and put a four-way stop on Fifth and South H.
That's right by the school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I've talked to Susan Warner about that a lot, so I think.
Well, I'm on your agenda, so can I speak to it?
Well, you guys are doing it.
I'll speak first.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make my own thing to say, well, I've been here, first of all, I've been here for years for various and in the school district, of course, for various things related to traffic flows and, you know, various things for student safety in that area of elementary schools. And thank you to the town for nu- numerous years of support, it's been wonderful. And secondly, whoever came up with the idea of the four-way stop, an eye and forth, genius. It has really cut down the speeding and the traffic going through there and everything else, so that's what inspired me to get this letter and request, you know, a four-way stop signed at Fifth and H. You know, and being retired, I live across the street from the school, and the traffic is just getting out of control. The speeding is getting out of control. I see people going barreling down that street all hours, including school hours, probably going forty-five or fifty miles an hour. I've talked in respect and all due respect to Sheriff Taylor, I've talked to him about it, he has amped up his patrols and everything. And uh, at the same time though, you know, that street, I think Third Street from the high school, I see speeding there, and Ninth Street's terrible too, so I don't know what the answer is for Third Street and Ninth Street, but I think the four-way stop at the intersection Fifth and H will be the answer. It might save some kids' lives too. You know, one day I had the ranch pickup, I pulled out from my house there, and a little kid ran out from behind a car right in front of me. That's a good thing I was only running five miles an hour.
Yeah.
But I think it's long overdue. Why I didn't do it as a principle, I think because I didn't look at age because I was always busy over at Hay in the morning and the afternoon, but living living across the street and seeing it all, like I said, inspired me to do this request, so thank you.
I I personally think there should be four-way stops at all the intersections around all the schools. I mean, it's, I don't know what the cost of that would be yet, but.
Wouldn't be terrible.
I I would really like to see four-way stops at the intersections around all three. I'm one street up from that. We're sitting down.
Well, I'll talk to Susan. I'll talk to Susan, she wants to sit down with me anyway, and we'll talk more about this. I mean, we can do this, but I mean, we'll talk more about other streets.
Yeah.
Can can we look at the cost? We have to see what.
We we are.
Four-way stops at all the intersections around schools.
We are working on the safe house to school project, also Michelle's been.
That'll actually help with our grant.
We worked on it last year, but we missed the budget, the deadline.
Yeah.
That would that would also help with our grant if they show that we're putting efforts forward without the grant to uh to create, I'd rather say, create new schools. So let's let's look at doing all the intersections around all three schools, a four-way stop.
I know the public's really grumble a lot about it, but I got three phone calls this week on South Third alone.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, and that's T's more than the through intersection, but.
Don't grumble until a kid gets hit and killed.
Right, right, so I I don't know how that works uh with a T instead of a through intersection. If you have a three-way stop.
You do a three-way stop.
Yeah, it it might be the only way.
Yeah.
And people that called me were asking for more uh speed codes and speed signs, well, everybody that's speeding, they're already knows it's a school zone, they know it's a twenty mile an hour zone, they're they're like you said, you know, forty-five miles an hour.
Let's look at doing four-way and three-way stops at all those intersections. If you need help with that, I'd be more than happy to help.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I've talked to Susan, she's in full support for super tech card picture of CD two for the.
So I I'll make a motion to do a four-way stop on uh which street was Fifth and H as being requested.
I'll second.
Motion second.
Aye.
Okay.
And then we'll look at the other intersections also.
I think.
Thank you.
Couple block.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. That's good.
Um, move on down to transition from Janine Hammond funding department to the same funding help. Um, Michelle?
So, um, Janine is looking at this must. She worked for the town for thirty-one years.
That's all.
That's it. Um, I knew that I was going to have a challenge to replace her, um, just because she's like an encyclopedia of information and I just didn't know exactly what to do, so I started to look at uh the potential uh candidates that we have in town or to outsource. And I found this company, CSA Planning, MTB, they're out of the metter. They will take us on as clients for the same amount that we are paying for Janine per year. They will also, um, unbudgeted for it, so if they could prove from budget committee, I've also budgeted forty thousand dollars to update our codes and our buildings. And they will do that. They will also include GIS over that overlay for us.
Nice.
Um, I like them. They're incredibly talented. We will get our, uh, our own planner. We'll intake, Dawn will be intaking all of the information from applications. We will package it together and we will do an F two P and send it over to them and then we can use. Um. In addition to that, CSA happened to be involved with Webra. So they know the town, they know what's going on and I'm really excited about it. Um. And I asked, you know, if we have a budget, that's all I have, I don't have anymore. Can you work with us on that? And they said yes. Now, if we need them for addition, they can take us as a à la carte and charge us.
For project.
Per, per project. And, you know, we're just not that busy yet.
Mm-hmm.
And we may need to renegotiate, but that's the direction of them.
So my suggestion is we hire them initially. We have to, this is, this is over the cap of professional services, so we'll have to RFP it very unlikely anybody else will do it. We still do that process. My suggestion is Michelle hires them on a minimum basis, because we definitely can hire them for temporary, because obviously we, the town's pro- permits and stuff don't stop. It's just because Janine's retiring. And then we give an RFP out. Probably unlikely anybody else does it.
Well, I, I looked high and low.
Yeah.
For, for them and they were like a needle in, a needle case.
So, yeah, you said, it's, but we still gotta do the, we've got to do the monitoring process and protest, yeah, but.
We hire somebody. I'd like to find someone that maybe doesn't know Lakeview as much, that is non-biased, that doesn't know about, you know, who's gonna stop this project because they're gonna stop this, because they know this person, you know, whatever. It would be nice if we had someone like that, in my.
That's this company.
Right. And, and, and again, there's, like Michelle has said, there's a lot of smaller, Medford has complete, Medford uses them for their planning department. Because, and again, three hundred thou- city of three hundred thousand people have just gotten out of the, having the person in their own. Because again, people like Janine are, well.
They're hard to find.
Well, Janine could have gone probably anywhere in the state and made ten times the salary if she wanted to work for them. I mean, she just had that level of talent. I mean, she could have been either a mid-level man, executive, or maybe even the planner for like Portland or something like that. She had that level of skill and you just don't find, that's a very particular just level of skilling, schooling, understanding maps, a lot of, it's, it's a, it's a unique package and usually those people can make a lot more money somewhere else, so.
They could all do that, yeah.
Yep.
Um, yeah.
As current chair of Lakeview's Planning Commission, I would like to know what relationship and interaction CSA anticipates having with the local planning commission?
Same as Janine. They, um, they may come over or they may zoom in. But they will be as involved as Janine.
Okay, so I will have access to them at any time with questions about anything coming.
Yes, sir.
I know I won't have the same access. I can't just shout across the plants.
Sorry about that. But you have a virtual thing. You can, you can talk to them at any time. Um, they're.
And this is not where they're going to bill the town X amount per phone call, email?
Um, I'm working on the contract right now to make sure that that is crystal clear. Simply because we don't have the budget to pay them anymore, so. And, and I had Dawn on the call and I had Janine, I had introduced them to this gentleman, Jay Hartman. Um, and I was very crystal, crystal clear. I have this money, that is all, not one penny more. Can you do it?
Okay, okay. We have a planning commission made up of amateurs. None of us have a planning background. We need the support of
Yeah.
a planner to make sure that we are making legal and appropriate decisions.
You have, you have that.
I felt to be confident in the meeting that we have with them, because I was really nervous when I went in thinking, okay, what kind of crackerjacks are we gonna get here? When really it was full of knowledge. I felt confident I could write out a bunch of questions and present it to them at the next meeting, which I have done so, so I will be asking. Because I have concerns also, but he was nice enough and very forward with all of his answers and anything Michelle or Janine asked, he didn't sugarcoat anything. It was, it was nice.
Yeah.
And espe- and especially some of the challenges coming up with portable housing and stuff like that, just, I think having somebody that has all that experience, because again, if, if you think we have a housing shortage, they're doing stuff for Medford. The portable housing stuff is their big, I mean, that's their biggest issue, because Medford hasn't had a housing supply and after those fires, it's even worse, so.
He did bring that up about the fires when we were in my meetings.
So it's, uh, like I said, I, I think somebody with that kind of experience, obviously we still have to RFP it, but.
Oh, yeah. So do we need a motion to go forward with hiring as an interim?
I think it would be a good idea to authorize Michelle to do that, then we'll, and then a motion for us to do an RFP together.
I'll make a motion to let, have Michelle hire them, retain them as interim until we get RFPs back. And also make a motion to put RFPs out.
Second.
Motion, motion, second. Frozen paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, budget dates in time. Everybody has their budget book with the calendar and everything. We have a meeting tomorrow night at six. Okay, Matt. Lana, would you please stand up?
All three feet is it?
What, what a lot of people don't know is Lana's one of our firefighter dispatchers. And she applied for a grant, first time ever. And she got a hundred and five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars for this grant. That grant will be purchased turnouts. It, average cost to suit up one person is twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, SCBA's, the breathing apparatuses for the fire department, they need new ones. And also possible wildland, or a polaris fire side by side that we can use, stuff like on the hillsides and stuff like that. So this is the first time she's ever done this and we are so happy that she did this. So now, I think you're gonna be fire department's grant. So, but I wanted to, I wanted to recognize you
Thank you.
for doing that and I thank you. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you. Very good. Good job, Lana.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And you were worried, huh?
Sure. I didn't tell her why she was telling me.
No.
I kept it a secret.
She wore her fire jacket. She's expecting.
Yeah.
Anybody that have questions and, you know, the weight and exactly what a turnout, what turnout, turnouts were, so I just grabbed my jackets and, uh, you know, I could show anybody who had questions and.
It also can be said that Lana has picked up, um, and taken, uh, the training over at Meyer and have, has increased the training. Um, takes care of all of the online training. She spearheads that and is seeing that people are giving more hours under firefighter and there's a lot of, um, goals that we've set in their personal evaluations as they come across and she's willing to do it. So also, it's impressive.
Which, which agency awarded the grant?
Um, it's the State Fire Marshals. Uh, the Oregon State Fire Marshal is the agency that awarded the grant and it was a wildland, it's called a WUI Assistance Grant. It's a wildland inter- urban interface assistance grant. And we were offered the grant because of the wildfires that the state incurred last year. And because, uh, Lake County was impacted because of the Bratton Fire, the Crane Fire and all that, we were success- successful in requesting new turnout gear because, um, the coat that I brought tonight is my coat that is probably three times ago my partner's coat. So we're in desperate need of, I mean, we're, we are very, very, very fortunate here as a community not to have a lot of structured fires where we're required to go internal with our equipment and where, uh, we do have a washing machine to wash our coats and our turnouts and keep them clean and, and kind of preserved, I guess would be the word. Um, they are required after a certain amount of hours and where to replace the turnout gear. So we have gotten rid of older gear that we have and, uh, kept, you know, as the best stuff that we have. We keep it for the newer people that are coming in, that are training up and then when we can get a grant, when we can replace our gear, then we replace our gear.
Thank you again, Lana.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, move on down. Notice of payroll dates have been changed from the tenth to twenty-fifth to every other Friday now.
This has been needing to be done for about two years.
Does that say payroll cost?
Um, it's required by the union to have it on this cycle. Um. Payroll remains the same as vice cost.
Okay.
The cost of, the cost of payroll remains the same, but doing payroll on every other week period quits all of the overtime for both firefighters and for everyone else in the same cycle that they get paid. So it probably halves the amount of, um, exterior calculations and spreadsheets and stuff like that we have to keep in order to document payroll.
This is a pay-go. Basically, this is a pay-to-go basically, and it also helps keep us in compliance with some federal state labor standards for some type of thing.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on down to the pool schedule and charges. We will, gonna open up for the, the, we can't back for school without, but that's not gonna happen. Cause we're getting our electrical replaced and some of the stuff hasn't showed up, so it's gonna be a little later.
Oh, I, I don't know. We, we originally talked about the twelfth of June.
Yeah, but my third's won't be treated.
Okay, it's not, it's not due to the electrical.
Okay.
The third, he's not ready.
At the time, we thought it was.
If he's not ready this week, then we're gonna do a safety upgrade and, and put the electrical upgrade off until it's fall, so. Uh, we, we did, uh, have a little setback with the roof. Uh, roofers came down, found some rot in the raptors and the heating and so we got Rob Thornton, builder, to come down and, and tour into it real fast and, uh, did a real nice repair. We got the building inspector involved in it. We got, uh, an independent, uh, engineer to take a look at it and, uh, he wrote up a little report on it. Uh, Rob's now done. He finished yesterday. Roofers will be back tomorrow, so. Um, we're gonna be back on schedule with that. They'll be done, uh, weather permitting, by the end of the week, Thursday or Friday, they'll be finished, so. Um, still got my fingers crossed that Joe McIntosh will get his parts to do the electrical. I'd like to, to see it all done. We don't wanna have to spend any money, uh, you know, making it safe to operate with the old electrical equipment, which I think would be impossible to make it completely safe with the old equipment, so we're still. And if you guys are, you know, if it's not gonna be any big deal, if we can put it up one more extra week, then we can almost guarantee it would be finished. I, I thought it was really under the gun here, so, uh, we'll, we'll meet the, meet the schedule. We'll start filling it hopefully for part of next week. It's about a week to get the water balanced, uh, and it's pretty cold to start with. We get the heat exchanger and all of them. We get it warmed up, so.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Um, I, I wonder, it, that's heated with geothermal, right?
Yeah.
Can we make it warmer, the water?
Well.
I'm sorry.
We made it as warm as we could possibly make it last year and we actually put geothermal right out of the well into it, but it has a, a really high pH, so if we fill it completely with that, it'll cost us a fortune in chemicals to balance it, so we go with about a fifty-fifty foot and it's straight in. And then we start the heat exchanger as soon as we get the water in there and start. And we were, you know, twelve degrees warmer last year at starting than we were the year before, so. I mean, we started the year before at sixty-nine degrees and we were, you know, seventy-nine last year, so it was much more comfortable.
I just add, I had to ask.
Yeah. Uh, we gotta, you want me to go ahead and speak to a few other things that we have in public works going on?
I would love that.
So the pool, the electrical is still kind of up in the air. The roof, roofers will be back tomorrow. Uh, we're good to go with the building inspector. Matt Springer is leaving our employee and we interviewed another person and we've offered a job to him, so Troy Miller from, he's moved here to town a couple of years ago, is gonna go to work for us. Um. We got some estimates for some sidewalk work. Uh, we've all been pretty concerned with the condition of the sidewalks around the big park and it's, you know, basically down to a gravel trail in a lot of places. So we've got two of the estimates back so far out of the three we asked for and it's not as scary as we thought it would be. It looks like we might be able to pull it off and, you know, it's gonna be, part of it's gonna be done during the swim season, but we'll just have to, you know, really swim season and pouring concrete season are the same season, so. There's not really a time we can do it when the, when the pool's not open, so.
What kind of cost are we looking at?
The, the lowest bid we have right now, uh, for over thirty-four hundred square feet of surface is about twenty-four thousand, but we've only got the only bids back so far. Okay. Um. We're gonna spend some of our water capital improvement money on smart meters, so I'll do a couple of things, uh, when we get completely switched over to smart meters, we'll be able to read in the later time, which will save a lot of confusion. It'll save people writing things down in a book, a book that you guys all hate. A book, and then somebody else looks at their handwriting and writes that down or punches it in the computer from the book, so it goes through several layers of human error. Um, we're gonna get, it'll be, we're, we're starting off with a hundred or so meters and, and then next year we'll do at least two hundred, if not five hundred. So we're looking at maybe phases in a man over a three-year period. And but right now with the first hundred here, we're getting tablets and so then the guy will be able to just use a stylus and punch numbers into the tablet. And the system that we're getting has a computer program in the tablet that won't allow you to put numbers in there that don't make sense. It won't let you put in a number that's less than the previous read, which happens how many times?
We don't wanna talk about that.
It's really, um, really gonna save a lot of headaches in a lot of areas. Uh, we're, we're about fifteen years behind and getting up to that, so we're pretty excited about that. Another little public works, uh, project we have, I've always hated the fact we have gas chlorine at the spring line above this swimming pool. So we have a company coming down to replace that with a dissolved chlorine tablets and so I said, as quickly as you can get the stuff in your hands, we can get down here and so. By the time we're two, three weeks into the swim season, I think we'll have that, that system in place, so. And we're getting some good spring water right now. We're getting three hundred and fifty thousand gallons in twenty-four hours. Pretty good amount.
How full is it?
What's that?
How full is it? Like, is it, are we good on spring?
Um, well, the spring comes out of the ground, so it's.
You can't really tell with it.
Right, you can't even get up there right now, but.
Still snow.
This is twice the water we had at this time last year coming out of the spring, so. It must have been a pretty good snowpack up there.
Thank goodness for that.
So we're also, you're flushing and then you have divers coming?
Yeah, yeah. The, the first of June, we have divers coming to clean the tank at Goldmore Terrace. It's a positive pressure system. It can't be drained. If you do, then you gotta go on boil notice for the whole Goldmore system. So we have a, every five years, we have, uh, Liquivision technology come down from Clamath and they have divers that go in the tank. They get, uh, sterilized. They, they submerge in a steril- get in there, take a big pool type vacuum, vacuum the whole floor out, uh, so. Luckily, that's far enough out in our system that it, it doesn't get the same stuff that our tanks here on the hill do. But in five years, you can definitely, you know, they probably take two thousand pounds of sediment out of it. So that'll happen right away. We just probably help. Losing one employee, get a new one. Hate to see Matt go, but he has another adventure in mind, so I think his replacement will be very capable.
Yeah, I think you're getting a good guy.
Yeah.
I, I know a little bit about him.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Kevin's done a question.
I got a question for you. For the, uh, smart water meters, um, the first hundred, do you know, like, who they're gonna go to? Is it gonna be like an application system?
One area of probably the books that I read. And then, you know, we will be able to just, uh, we, we don't know exactly which area of town they're gonna be in, but we know it'll be in, you know, both sides of the street. North Second Street has all new, uh, resetters, so North Second Street would be a good spot. That's not actually one of my books, but, um. So we know that, that all the resetters are good and all the lines servicing them are good, so, uh, that would be a good candidate, would be North Second Street.
Um, we're also, uh, working with the DOC, our Geo, Geo Bureau up there, stopping some problems.
Yeah, we, we're starting.
And we got well eights.
We started experiencing some trouble not being able to supply the G O C with the recommended amount. If they need the heat, they were having intermittent boiler issues at the end of winter. So they hired somebody to come down here and troubleshoot the system, and they came up with, they think our pumps are not big enough. But we've got by for all these years with the pumps that we have in there, and to go to a bigger pump means more electricity. It means more expensive pumps. Well, I'm not completely convinced that if that's the answer, so. I'm going through our pumps, cleaning all the heat exchangers, and have their person back down here, and we may wanna get a consultant of our own. I think they have some type, possibly, an issue on their end that they're not finding. Our side is pretty simple. It's functioned for all these years with the size of pump we have, and, you know, unless they doubled in size, which I don't think they have, it should still heat them.
It wasn't a very cool winter either.
Right, right. So, I don't know. I suspect the fact that, that the water that circulates between the prison and our caf is supposed to be prime water, is supposed to be treated like a boiler system, and it never has been. So I think we could have some type of scale. We either have heat loss in the fight between us and them, or, or an issue like that. It's, it may be beyond all my guys' collective ability to figure it out. We may have to get a professional. But we're working with that. What was the other thing?
Well eights.
Oh, yeah, well eights. We started experiencing some trouble the end of last summer with well eight. It was starting to cavitate and pump air, and that's terrible for the pump, so we thought we had a bad pump. We pulled it out. I found the pump to be in actually pretty good shape, so we had a camera crew come over from Clalit's and put a camera in there, and about forty years ago, they put a new perforated liner in that well because it had rotted and let gravel get inside of it, so they had a well drill to clean it out and put stainless steel perforations in it, a liner screen for the hundred feet where the water comes from. And the camera showed that it was completely, I would say ninety-eight percent sealed shot, so. We had a similar situation on the geothermal re-injection well a couple of years ago. We had a company come down here and put a detonator cord down in it and just pop it, and it just cleaned them so beautifully that I reached out to that person to see if he would want to come down and see if this is a good cavity to look at the films and the way the screen is built. The screens look, you know, just like they did when they were put in forty years ago, other than the fact they're completely sealed off. When the camera crew was here, they wanted to go put some chlorination in it and then put a little fresh water in it. It was so plugged off that when they were putting the fresh water in it, the thing actually filled up. So, I mean, it has really got some plugged-off perforations, so. It's one of our smaller wells, but it's the lowest in iron and manganese, so that was our standby. It was running all the time. So.
Smaller, we'll find the better wells.
Yeah.
And last but not least, the bike racks.
Yes, and we're gonna be putting up the bike racks that Shelley and Tom were instrumental in getting built a couple of years ago. And she's gotten me a map of people that are interested in having them, so we're gonna be probably starting right here in front of Town Hall. We'll experiment with that, and then we'll head to the bike shop and branch out from there as time allows. I think it's due to the solar flares. We have water leaks everywhere right now. And, I mean, we were really lucky through the cold part of the winter, but now that the weather's decent, we have literally got, you know, we just found out about our seventh water leak this week, so. We're gonna try to keep track of that. Cool.
You're all in good mood.
It's just business as usual.
Gee, thanks, Jeff.
Okay, um, let's move on back to gender.
All right. I wanted to come and give you an overview. We're closing out the Brownsfield and the Delaware projects that L C P is involved with and facilitating in the community in partnership with the town and the Chamber of Commerce and other folks, but in some of the downtown businesses. So I wanted to start out with Brownsfield. We're closing out the last of the three-year, the first three-year project, and we have completed, you know, several assessments, and I've talked about that before. And we have two major projects that are going to go over into the second three-year project. And that three-year project will begin October first, except that because we have, this is the second one. It is contiguous with the first project. We may be able to start drawing down money as early as July, so that we can go into, we can go into two projects that we were not able to complete for a couple of different reasons. One of those is Don's Market. I've got a couple of pictures here for you. This is Don's Market back in the day, and I thought you guys would kind of enjoy seeing Don's Market.
Can you put it back that way? Can you make it back, look that way again?
Oh, yeah, I know. Wouldn't that be cool? Anyway, it really looked pretty cool, and you can see the gas pumps sitting out there in front. And those are kind of what were, one of the problems and why it's on everybody's radar to have a demo. So the cost of demoing the building, which, and the whole area there, is the reason why it has to be done is because trying to, the pumps are so close to the building and the awkwardness of the landscape there, the geography creates a situation where you can't get in there to do the drilling or whatever it is that they do to test to see if those tanks are leaking. So the whole structure needs to come down, and the cost is gonna be around ninety thousand dollars. The second round of Brownsfield funding is six hundred thousand for three years, so that's almost one-sixth of our, of our funding, but it's well worth it. And one of the good things about the funding this time is that it's, there is no requirement for our guidance about how much to use for hazardous substances and how much to use for petroleum products and petroleum issues. The grant that we are just ending, it was three hundred thousand for each, and this time, you know, we can, we have a lot more flexibility. We have more hazardous substance issues here than we do petroleum. I mean, we have some petroleum, but we had, actually had petroleum money that we were trying to figure out how, who would need some help, and we didn't manage to find that, but anyway, so that's, that's all good. So we don't know when this is gonna happen for sure, but we are, it's probably gonna happen this summer. It would have to happen in the summer, the early fall. So I'm standing here by Michelle because I have some pictures, and it's hard to kind of tell. So the rendering for the, so this is a rendering. I don't know how clearly you can see it. This is from, you know, atop sky view of what that property could look like as an entry into town. The consulting company we use, Cardnell, they have access to all sorts of bells and whistles to help communities vision what can happen in redevelopment of a property. And so you can see here that the point of the triangle there can, is, there's a gazebo right behind it or a covered area that's right behind it, and then that circular area is kind of, I think it's got some benches and things like that. There's some additional plantings, and there's a walkway that goes from street to street with stairs down from the higher level of the, of the property down to, what is that, H Street? Yeah, H Street. So that's, that's what could be possible, and there's a strong possibility that we may be able to access funding if that whole dream comes true. And, well, you know, it's a hurry up and wait kind of thing, but it's, it could be possible. So sometimes it's hard to envision things, and we've been able to use their, their company and their expertise for us to be able to see it because it, you know, when you look, look at what we have now with Don's Market in this, it's, it's pretty dramatic change. So anyway, I just wanted to show that to you. I think you're probably all pretty familiar with the properties that we have already assessed. We only have one property in the county that was assessed, and there were some recommendations for some cleanup, which they don't have to do if they don't want to. It wasn't anything, you know, disastrous, and that was at Carlin Mill State. They are in the process of possibly doing some redevelopment, or there's somebody that wants to, and I think that they wanted to wait until that process happened. But in almost every case, we were able to find a remedy and/or there was a letter of no further action, which is really like goal for a building or a property. It means that you never have to go through that again, and that goes with the property when it settles, like an easement or something, so that the, the next owner knows that the property's clean, so, and doesn't need any, doesn't need, they don't have to worry about having to clean something up. So that, that's been really good. This, this next grant also has a lot of flexibility and some planning pieces that can come with it for infrastructure and planning for redevelopment. So the Lakeview Lumber site, which all of you know is down on North J and Fourth Street, which I don't have a picture of, but we all know where it's at. It's about twenty-two acres, and it has two acres that are facing on to Fourth Street, and then the rest of the property is behind that and faces along J Street. And we did some community meetings early on with that property, and what people really wanted to see, there was a complex of mixed use. Soft industrial, which would mean like upholsters or maybe even mechanics or things like that. Some, because there's housing right directly across the street and neighborhoods have grown up around that old mill site, there's some, possibly some mixed use of multiple family dwellings or small, small homes, smaller homes, green space, which our town desperately needs. We don't have very many parks or green space areas, and also a grocery store and some small retail, like another, like a Walgreens or something like that. So that was, those, that's what the community envisioned, and we did some renderings for that and some choices of renderings for people to look at, again, so that you could see some visioning. And all of them had the green space running on J Street, between J Street and whatever was gonna happen behind it to sort of be a buffer, and then the two-acre piece was more where the retail and the grocery store could possibly go. The family that owns the property, the Williams family, they don't live here. They never have. Their parents lived here for many years and acquired the property, but the family, the siblings, the children of the Williams, don't really want to live here. They are all very accomplished and, you know, reside elsewhere. One of them has a vineyard in the Santa Monica area or San, Santa Barbara area. One of them lives in the mountains in Wyoming. He's a retired attorney, and the others, I'm not sure about. I deal with those two brothers a lot with this project. They want to see redevelopment of this according to what the community would like to see. Because they don't live here, they don't know, and they have been very precious in, to us, I think, and to Lakeview, to take that into consideration. They're not necessarily interested in grabbing on to, you know, something that will create wealth for them. They're interested in it moving on, but they, they wanna make sure that it will be something that is, that is helpful to Lakeview. So we are continuing with that planning process with them and development, and we're bringing in some folks to help them with that. We have money that will be able to be dedicated to that. It's really our largest piece of property that we have to deal with, and it's so core in our downtown, or not downtown, but almost downtown area, and important to us, except for Carlin Mill. It's thirty-six acres, but that one, it sounds like that. There is some possibility of redevelopment there, so that's one of the things that we're highlighting. The other thing that we're doing is that there's, there's money to help with planning for infrastructure projects for the town of Lakeview and for the city of Paisley, and the city of Paisley also has water issues, and they're thrilled to know that we may be able to help them realize some funding dollars for that because, as you all probably know, you cannot get grants or loans if you haven't been through a planning process with infrastructure issues, so that will be very helpful, I think, to them in the long run. So that's happening. The other thing that's going on that will hopefully be happening, we're targeting the Hereford Building. Yay, yay, for phase, we've already kind of completed a phase one, but we're gonna do a phase two, and it's gonna, you know, they're gonna go over it with a fine-tooth comb. There's obvious things, we, you know, probably tons of lip paint, like the, the Alger Theater, and there's definitely asbestos, but from that point forward, we don't know. And it will be really good to know those things for redevelopment of, hopefully, the Hereford Building. There is not any prospects on the horizon, but we feel that if we concentrate on that building downtown right now, that, that could happen. I mean, it's so integral to the downtown area that, you know, something needs to happen, so that's one thing. We've got other folks that are on the line right now that we don't have permission to disclose where those properties are. There's some in the north part of the county, two or three, and there's a couple here in Lakeview. So that's kind of what the, the project is gonna look like till the next three years. A lot more community involvement than we had even in the last ones. So, you know, as a partner or a part of the coalition, this was a coalition grant, then, you know, the town, we hope that U.S. counselors and staff will be, you know, fairly intimately involved with some of these meetings, especially with the redevelopment of possibilities with Lakeview Lumber. And as we proceed forward with the Hereford Building, we'll try and get the Hereford Phase Two done as soon as possible so that some community development or community, or some development, redevelopment planning could possibly happen for that. Let's see, what else can I tell you here? That's just one of the things that I wanted to talk with you about. Do you have any questions about the Brownsfield? Project?
How many buildings do we need to get cleared?
We did Lakeview, there was Lakeview Lumber, Alger Theater, fourteen A and B, F Street, which is a former K V, those two buildings, Talltown Bike and Camp, the mortuary, and Phase One only. I probably, I went through my list. I think I'm missing one, but there was a Phase One that was done on Don's Market. There are Phase Ones on Lakeview Recycled Lumber and Forty-eight oh five Repair on Upper E Street, and then Phase One and Two was recommendations to Carlin Mill. And I feel like I'm missing one, but those are the ones, so that's like, uh, one, two, three, four, five, I mean, six if you wanna say that Talltown is two buildings. They consider it to be, but it's really not. But, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, about ten. So that's an expensive process, very, the testing, and we have larger properties, and those, I mean, the, the Carlin Mill and Lakeview Lumber ate up probably about a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and sixty thousand, you know, compared to. So, okay. Any other questions about that? So travel, yes, sir?
I'm just wondering, I know that, that when ODOT was setting up to do their re-streetscape of all the handicap ramps, I wonder if they reached out to those people. I know they'll probably spend, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars redoing those ramps on that corner. I wonder how those would fit in with the new plan if we were able to go forward.
Don's Market?
Right.
It'll build around whatever they do. That's, yeah, whatever they do.
Because they're pretty good to work with, you know, if the plan that you have would be better suited to something different from them, now would be the time to reach out to them.
Um, you know what? I'll take that to the consultants, but. I'll take that to the consultants, but I think that, you know, we sort of talked about that a little bit a couple of weeks ago and they said, you know, whatever happens, we'll have to work around. Yeah.
Unless they have, unless you have to go back and dig out whatever they put in to remove tanks.
Uh, the tanks are located at the corners of the building. The only place that I would, I don't know what they're, yeah, you've got a good question or good point. I'll see what we can figure out. Have they started digging that out yet?
They have not started that one. They're they're across the street.
Okay.
In fact, it'd be put on the back burner until, you know, we get a little bit.
Yeah, we don't know, we don't know the timeline on this either.
Sure.
So that's that's the other.
They'll probably have to.
It's going to be.
I just hate to see they don't spend a bunch of money there. They're they're.
Oh, yeah, I I understand what you're saying. I'll I'll bring it up. That sounds good. So the next thing is the Travel Oregon Public Spaces and Downtown Beautification Project that we received funding for just recently. And I found out that today that the check is in the mail today. So we can finally start purchasing the parflit that's going to go in front of Talltown and Warner Valley Market here. And that we can start planning on where shall we, where those things are going to go. So if you guys already have an idea of where your bike racks are going to go, if you let us know, we there's going to be a meeting next week so that we can figure it out.
Okay.
And it'll probably be Thursday.
I will get to go with Jeff and me.
So we'll, so if you are available, we'll make plans to meet next week so we can start figuring out placement.
Sure.
Issue. Okay. So that's very exciting. There is, yeah, there's the parflit picture. It's going to be very similar to that. And the company that we are buying it from have been absolutely amazing to this point to work with. They are so worried that they they've got a steel price increase coming up and they. So tomorrow I will probably be documenting everything before the weekend so that we can get this going. And we have some measurements that we might have to do. If I can talk to Jeff about that later or maybe tomorrow. There's a few things that we have to do prior to the execution of the documents to get them ordered, but we're we're on our way now, so we should have a Monday, Thursday or Friday. That's pretty exciting. And it actually fits in to the downtown planning project that has been floating around here for the last almost two years. And so we 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 were struggling with getting it funded funded. And suddenly, South Central Oregon Economic Development District, Skoa, who I used to work for, realized that they had money from the E D A for COVID economic recovery, downtown planning, et cetera, et cetera. They have fifty thousand dollars that they could put towards the project, which dragged us right out of the doldrums on whether or not this was going to be able to happen and when it was going to be able to happen. So an RFP was issued for consultants to provide a scope of work. And they, the response came in last week and the contract was executed today. We're not slowing down on this one either. We're going fast. It is with Bridge Economic Development Consulting Firm in Portland. And Alyssa Pischke is the principal there. And she has done quite a bit of work with the Brownfields Project here already and some other things. She's familiar in the community and the project. So you know, there's five phases to the project. One of them is community and stakeholder engagement, just getting stakeholder engagement, just getting everybody up to speed about the project and what's going to happen. There'll be a steering committee that will be developed that will see the project through from beginning to end. And the first phase is going to be developing a downtown strategy. We're going to be looking at what is the amount of retail in our downtown, what it can support, what does the enhancement of visitors and tourists mean in our community? What, you know, what do they want and need? An evaluation of existing downtown conditions as it is now. Evaluation of zoning codes, so that kind of dovetails in with everything that's going on with COVID enforcement and all of that. Development of an investment prospectus that defines the downtown vision and opportunities for investment for our specific geographic region, not for Eugene, not for Malin, not for New Pine Creek, for Lakeview, you know, what makes sense for us. So that's pretty, that's pretty good. And this will help with other local planning, with anything that we're going to be doing in Lakeview. So and then there'll be an action plan that will come out of that is to, you know, and that will, that will, there'll be a series of community meetings to make sure that it's in alignment with the building owners, with the town, with the community and how they all feel about it so that we're really on target. We want this to be something that is relevant. So the the last piece, which I think is probably one of the more important ones, but it's very interesting and could be challenging. And that is a tax increment financing feasibility study so that we can understand if having a sharing in the taxing districts dollars that they receive could help us develop a fund that could be used for downtown improvements to assist building owners to maybe for some facade development. But we know, we would all like to see the old life holes go away on E Street. And we really don't have funding to do that. This taxing district is like an urban renewal district in that it is developed over for over a twenty-year period. And this feasibility study will tell us, is it going to be worth it to do that? Are we going to realize enough of it out enough out of it to make it so that it will be something that will actually be positive for the community or for the downtown? So that's going to happen, that's going to start right away. And it's also going to dovetail with another project that the town is doing. So, um, any questions about that? Where you're going to be invited to and requested to be as involved as you want to be in this particular project and we hope you will be. So the next piece is the Alger Theater. And I have some pictures here of the historic picture that went away. There's a collage here of historic pictures of what it used to look like. The one that's on the top left is, you'll see this very brave person on a wooden ladder. In about nineteen fifty-six, and he is painting the Alger and he is, that is the original color. That is what it originally looked like. And he is going to the center top picture. That was what he was in the process of getting ready to do, we believe. So it took us quite a while, that particular picture. And then we've got one other that's on the bottom right, I believe, are the only ones that we have been able to find that show us any how any indication as to what the original colors were. And they were, you know, obviously cream color, kind of almost a pinkish cream color. And the Alger sign itself was a burgundy, a dark burgundy with the yellow neon around it. And somewhere along in the late sixties or so or the seventies, it became what it is today. So I have renderings that we're we're not quite ready to let go of them because we've got a couple of things we want to change on. I was really hoping that I could bring them today so you could see what the new look is going to be. It's all going to be exactly the same in terms of the architecture of the building, but if the colors are going to go back, I can tell you that to the original. And it's going to look fabulous at night. It's going to be amazing. And it'll look good during the day, but the nighttime view is going to be something else again. So we're really excited about that. Probably around the week of June seventh, the company that you can go to. Some of the structural issues. I don't know how interested you are in this, but of course I have kind of completely. There we go, that one. Okay, so this is, this is what, of course, you all know that we do own the building next door now that has the same facade. And the reason for that is that we hope to integrate that particular building into adjunct services for the theater that will actually make it performing arts with dressing rooms and green room and extended adult concessions for when they have concerts or I need more space, offices, storage, et cetera, and E D A restaurants. So what's happening on the week of June seventh is that the what they call the pylon sign, the big Alger sign is going to come down and it's going to get put on a big truck and it's going to go into Sacramento, California, to Alpha Sign Company's shop and it's going to get totally refurbished. The framework, the metal framework that is around the reader boards, the on the marquee there, the front, all of that's going to come down. And when it all comes down, you're going to be able to see on the inside of what's going on on that marquee. So if you go to one of the next pictures, which is, no, you don't want to read the Alger. Trust me, it's too long. Oh, uh, yeah, let's try that one. Yeah. Okay, so we've had engineers and designers crawling all over this. You've probably seen us out there twisting and turning over what is actually going on. The underside of the marquee is called the soffit. And you can see kind of how thick it is. So if you can imagine from the where it says June fourth, go up to about the the bottom of where it says, the bottom of the word curbside or maybe right in the middle of that word. I don't know, I don't have a big measure in my head. But think of eighteen inches of concrete that starts right there, goes all the way back to the back wall and around the the box office, twenty thousand pounds of concrete. The designer for the marquee and our designer for the overall theater project and the structural engineer have never seen anything like this ever. And the the marquee designer, this is his forty-second theater that he's worked on. So we we are now trying to understand how to take that down because it is causing some cracking, some cosmetic surface cracking. It has not disturbed the structure itself. You see that poster box there, right to the left of that poster box? There's a crack that comes down from the top under the soffit all the way to the ground. And then on the opposite side, in exactly almost the same place, it's doing the same thing through the through the ceramic tile. So that is going to be a mystery, it's a mystery right now as to how that's going to come down, but it is definitely got to come down because it is beginning to candlelighter forward and that's why there's those cracks and it can become structural. So it's going to be very interesting to watch that process whenever it happens. It'll happen sometime this summer and it will be a combination of Bogotá construction over in Klamath and specialized concrete removals, a company who usually removes concrete from the ground and not from ten feet up. So that's that is, it is problematic, but we we believe it can be taken care of. So that is what's going on right now with the renovation. As soon as this is complete, then there's some internal, you know, things that we're going to be doing. Some of it's cosmetic painting and that sort of thing. The curtain is coming down because it's not fire retardant. And all of the rigging and the catwalk and all of that is going to come down and be replaced in the fire doors in the back. So it's, you know, it's a slow process. We still have, there's a whole lot of other things like electrical, that sort of stuff that needs to happen. Uh, we are going to open just as soon as we understand more about what's happening with with bringing down the marquee. We're going to have movies. We've got two, we've got two concerts that are almost scheduled. Like I said, we're just waiting. One of them is a Kingston Trio Revival Group. We're pretty excited about them. Cam Newton, who lives out in the road or out in Warner Valley, who's a jazz guitarist, has agreed to do a benefit concert for us. And we are still looking at the possibility of a Cowboy Poet revival this fall in conjunction with Travel Southern Oregon. And L C R I is willing to do their documentary there sometime this summer. And there's also several dark sky programs that are probably going to be happening there over the summer. The dark sky program is starting to really receive a lot of attention from our tourist crowds. So that's that's kind of what's going on with that. There's also the first Friday event, the first one was really, really very well attended. This next one on June fourth, it's graduation weekend. We don't know exactly what the crowd's going to be like, but we do have Warner Creek Correction Facility employees are doing a free hot dog barbecue for everyone to thank them for all their support. And we also have about fourteen vendors right now. We'll probably have more by then because they kind of tend to wait till the last minute. We had twelve or thirteen last time, so I think we'll probably end up having more. We're going to have a sidewalk sale and curbside cravings and it's sponsored by Lush Walk and O type builders will be there. So that's what's going on. Yeah, he's played for a lot of people. He's pretty amazing.
Cool guy.
It's very cool. Anyway, any questions about any of that? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yes.
Okay, that's all we have. Does anybody have anything else? And then we'll adjourn the meeting at seven twenty-six.